We will now call the business session of the May 14th, 2024 meeting to order at 6:08 PM. Sorry, we're a couple minutes late. All council members are present. Welcome to our guests and visitors. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first work session is a discussion concerning the process of filling city council District 5 vacancy.
It's not often we get to see Michelle down.
Want to be down here that last. Hello, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Hi, Michelle.
So tonight, we're going to go over the appointment process for the upcoming vacancy for D-5, District 5. So I'm going to view the city charter requirements, talk about the eligibility of the office to apply, go through the appointment process and the timeline, and then the notices that will be provided for the public. So the Waco City Charter provides that the city council shall fill a vacancy by majority vote of the remaining members of an unexpired term. So what are the qualifications to be a candidate for the upcoming vacancy? The election code and the city charter outlines those requirements. You must be a United States citizen. You must be 21. You must not be determined mentally immobilized, have not fully been convicted of a felony. Must be a resident of the district. In this case, we're talking about District 5. So you must be a resident of the district for at least six months prior to the appointment date. Have resided in Texas and the city of Waco for 12 months. And lastly, a qualified voter for the state of Texas and the city for 12 months. So next, I'll discuss the proposed timeline for the appointment process. And so recently, we've discovered that there was a conflict with this actual proposed timeline. So I'll still go through the process, however, proposed two different dates. So as of tomorrow, we would like to release the press release explaining the application process and making it the first day to file for the office. Those applications can be filed in my office and the city secretary's office Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. I'm actually proposing that May 31st be the last day to file the application, do interviews for the applicants on June 6th, and then make an appointment no later than June 25th at the regular session council meeting. Notices that will be provided to the public. We'll do the press release, as I stated, outlining the process. It'll be on the MyWaco TV. We will have notices published on the city of Waco's website, our social media outlets, and the information will be provided to the Neighborhood Engagement Office. Any of the information that's released to the public will be offered in Spanish as well if requested. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Michelle, just briefly, with the new timeline, which is applications in by the 31st and then interviews on June 6th, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And when do you expect that notice to go out to the public? Okay, thank you.
Would there still be any need for the special meeting on the 25th in that case?
25th is the regular session, regular meeting.
Oh, great.
Other questions? I was having IT issues over here.
They already boot you out of the system?
Exactly. All the colors are changed. They're changed. Thank you, Michelle. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-334. Is there a motion?
Oh, Mayor, I need to read the caption.
Oh, sorry about that. Still messing up after all these years.
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted to take a moment before, while Jennifer's getting the caption ready. She's got it ready. Sorry. I wanted to highlight a couple things. At your place, I've left you three files. First is a comment you'll hear about more in a minute from Scott Nix, a resident who I think has signed up to speak on the Riverway Development. Second is a scope of work from a firm called Verdunity. It has a little green logo at the top. This is a scope of work that I went out and got in between last meeting and this meeting in order to attempt to address the council's question regarding the costs of public services and the revenues of public services. So Verdunity, for your information, is a Texas-based firm. They work in many high-growth communities to help them understand the costs associated with development patterns and the revenues associated so that they can, communities can make wise decisions. That scope I've provided at your place would take about eight weeks and cost about $80,000. That is what I was able to put together in between this meeting and last meeting to put in front of you for consideration. Additionally, the developer has provided some language that I've left at your place as well. It says at the top, "From Caldwell Companies," and in parentheses, "Developer." It includes some language that would be used in lieu of the scope that I've gathered from Verdunity and would seek to, in the first three years of the development, it would seek for the two parties, the city and the developer, to get together after homes have been built in year three or year four and document the costs and revenues generated by the development. And through that process, after work between the two parties is done, we agree to sit down and talk about, if there's a gap, could the developer pay for the gap between the costs and the revenues? It's what I would categorize as an agreement to agree. So wanted that to be at your places, and it does, it's associated with each of the ordinances on your agendas tonight, as well as the resolutions. So I'll take any questions you have before Jennifer reads the caption on the ordinance.
Three years.
So the, it's in the impact fee language. I'll just read it because it's, it's, the first payment is after the date of the first vertical building permit, and then the time in which we would start the review process is three years after that. So it'd be pretty early in the process, but we have at least a sense of costs and revenues.
And just to clarify, when you say costs, you mean costs for the sort of ancillary things that the city would have to pay for, correct? Not costs associated with the award itself, because that is being generated purely by the increment?
Right. The cost, as they've defined it, is the public safety services cost. So police and fire, so when they go out on a call, there's an embedded cost that the city pays for each of those calls for service. And that's, that's an important distinction, because the Verdunity work is more comprehensive than the developer page, the public safety services review, as they've defined it, is a narrower scope.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So Bradley, we'd be saying, or city manager forward, we'd be just adding this entire 6B clause to the existing.
That's the developers.
Language, are we even, we're not approving the contract. Anyway, we're just saying in principle, this would be an addition to consider, or how are we, how are we considering it?
So you do have on your agenda a resolution to approve the development agreement, and this is the developer's proposed language to replace a section in the development agreement. And it provides for the parties to get together at a future date and talk about things.
Seems reasonable to add that to the, to the developer agreement.
Any other questions for Bradley?
Nope.
Jennifer, can you read the caption?
Sure. I'm reading the caption for ordinance 2024-334. An ordinance of the city of Waco, Texas, providing the comprehensive plan be amended to change the land use designations on property described as portions of property known as 1109 East Lake Shore Drive, property ID 102834, generally located southeast of the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and East Lake Shore Drive intersection, and described in a deed to CC Waco 521 Land Holdings LP, a Texas Limited Partnership, recorded under McClennan County Clerk's Document 2022-027229, of the official public records of McClennan County, Texas, all being located in the John Tucker Survey, Abstract 41, and the city of Waco, McClennan County, Texas, and the Calvin B. Emmons Survey, Abstract 337, in the city of Waco, McClennan County, Texas. Number one, land use change from suburban residential to mixed-use flex, and rezone from R1B to C2 on a tract being 18.465 acres. And two, land use change from suburban residential to medium-density residential office flex, and rezone from R1B to R3B on a tract being 10.874 acres. Three, land use change from suburban residential and mixed-use flex to mixed-use flex and rezone from R1B and C3 to C2 on a tract being 40.195 acres. And four, land use change from suburban residential and mixed-use flex, medium-density residential office flex, and rezone from R1B to R3B on a tract being 18.827 acres, providing the code of ordinances be amended by revising Section 28-247 and Chapter 28 zoning of the code. Providing the zoning map shall be changed that certain property described above shall have the zoning district classifications changed as specified above. Providing for penalties, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and finding and determining the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. This ordinance was approved by a 5-0 council vote on first reading on May 7th, 2024.
Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval on second reading with the addition and incorporation of the public safety services review language as negotiated by the parties.
Just as a clarification, Councilmember Holmes, this is just the zoning change, so that language wouldn't be added to this item.
That would just be for the contract or the award.
Right. I will just move for approval on second reading.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Borderwood?
I filed an affidavit on this one.
Your ASI. Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes.
Carries, and we'll move to ordinance 2024-335.
An ordinance of the city of Waco, Texas, amending Article 4 district regulations and Chapter 28 zoning of said code to add Division 31 Special District, Riverway Overlay District, and adding sections 28-880.34 to 28-880.40, establishing an architectural control committee providing a map of the new district, adopting the Riverway Design Book by reference. Providing that pursuant to Section 28-247 and Chapter 28 zoning of said code, the zoning map shall be changed, so the zoning classification of the property within the Riverway Overlay District shall be changed to and be designated by its existing base district classification plus the Riverway Overlay District designation. Repealing all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for penalties, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and finding and determining the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. This ordinance was approved by a 5-0 council vote on first reading on May 7th, 2024.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval on second reading?
Second.
Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Yes, a motion carries, and we'll move to ordinance 2024-336.
Submitting the project and financing plan for reinvestment zone number four for tax increment financing to provide TIF4 funds up to an estimated amount of $130 million to CC Waco 521 Land Holdings LP for public improvements, including water, sewer, drainage, and parks related to the Riverway housing units, 20, I'm sorry, housing development, which will bring over 1,800 housing units, 22 acres of commercial space, public parks, public river trails, and an arena on property bounded by North Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Lake Shore Drive, and the Brazos River, providing for the expenditure of tax increment funds for various estimated public improvement project costs as set out in the project and financing plan, authorizing the city manager to execute any contracts necessary in connection therewith, providing an effective date, providing a savings clause, and finding and determining the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. This ordinance was approved by a 3-2 council vote on first reading on May 7th, 2022.
You have a card here, and that is Mr. Scott Nix.
Before we start, I'm going to object because we have not had a first reading. The ordinance has been changed by changing 60 acres of commercial space to 22 acres. That is a substantial difference. It's over half. And since we did it for 60 acres the first reading, this is actually the first reading of this ordinance.
Mayor, this is the second reading. As Jeremy Pacino read the caption to the council, it included the 22 acres on a first reading on May 7th, and it is a lower number than the 60 acres, and so this is an appropriate second reading, and it's before the council for second reading.
Thank you, Jennifer.
What did she say?
She gave the legal opinion that it was an appropriate second reading.
Yeah, but why?
Jennifer, do you mind restating that for Mr. Nix?
Mr. Nix, on first reading, Jeremy Pacino read the caption, and he read it with 22 commercial units, which is a lesser amount than the 60 commercial units, and so this-
You mean acres there?
I'm sorry, acres, thank you. Commercial acres. And so this is an appropriate second reading.
Oh, so, okay. If you read it in, I didn't recall that, but that's fine. Okay. May I start?
Yes.
Okay. This is for ordinance 336, Resolution 337, and 338. I think everybody has my thing. You've read it. I'm not going to go very much into it. Basically, you're going to destroy the school district because they can't, they can't take the kids. This is, they got 750 kids now. You're going to put an extra 1,800 in there over 10 years? No way. It was, basically, the biggest objection is this was represented to the city through public, through the city, and the people of Waco as being 1,800 homes or rooftops. The last TIF meeting, it was 1,800-plus rooftops, homes. When we got to the public hearing, it was broken down, well, it's not 1,800, it's 1,800 living units. And now it's down to like 695 apartments, 232 units, builder-rent homes, moderate density, and the rest are single-family. This has been fraud on the city of Waco and the people of Waco by the developer. They didn't represent it right. Even in the Tribune Herald, when they interviewed you, one of the captions was 1,800-plus homes. This has never been 1,800 homes. For that reason alone, every one of you should vote against this. This has been misrepresented to the public from day one. Mr. Meek said this is a large development close to downtown Waco, which is 2.8 miles. I drove it today. I don't think 2.8 miles will get you a lot of, these people are going to go down to Waco. They're not. 130 million, that's a big cost for 2-point miles. The municipal management district, that's another burden on the people so that the developer can get his $130 million. It's for maintaining the streets, parks, which would be normally, the city would take over. This is almost like a, it's an additional tax. If you like an HOA or a condo association, you're going to love that because it's going to be easier to collect. It's going to go in your tax bill. There's another big issue, traffic. You've got two major roads leading out of that place, 1,800 living units. Most of these people are going to be dual workers. You're going to have 3,600 cars leave there. It's all, I went down Franklin. It wasn't that bad. I've said before, this is a government giveaway. It is. You're going to have to build a new fire station. You're going to have to do that signal out there. He's not going to contribute. It's out of your funds. Pure government giveaway. And I hope everybody would realize that and vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Nix.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion on ordinance 2024-336?
Move for approval on second reading?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
I'll say this. You may have your seat, Mr. Nix. We're in discussion. I'll disagree with you, sir, in that the actual, the definition of home is a place where one lives permanently. And my Andrea version is home is where your stuff is. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a single-family home for me to refer to it as a home. All the new residents of Riverside, of what was formerly Trimwood, now have new homes. It's an apartment complex, but that's their home. I think that we, there were a lot of questions that needed to be answered, and some of them have been, some of them haven't been. I think my concern is still the, and I realize that I've got a financial wizard sitting on this dais with me, and he has done a very good job at explaining how the process works even deeper, because I'm asking all the questions. I called TML because I had questions about MMDs. I called financial advisors down in Houston who facilitated and built muds. I called everybody I knew, because I wanted to be able to tell my constituents specifically, however, the community and residents of Waco, Texas, that I was 100% clear in moving this kind of money. Now, the money is, it's, it's, it is hard to explain how tax increment financing works because it's not like you take money out of my purse and put it over here. That's not the way it is. But I, I still, with this information, don't have enough to not consider it a larger risk than I'm willing to take. My vote is no. I think that for the reasons we created TIF4 was not to throw a whole bunch of money at one thing, and I think that it doesn't, I mean, we all are accepting of a level of risk, but I prefer mine to be a little bit more diverse, because, you know, yeah, I know, if it doesn't work for y'all, it doesn't work for us. I get it, all that phrase that I'll never say because I hate it. But I don't think that I, in my good conscience, can do that. So my vote is no.
Any other discussion? Please poll the council.
Bearfield?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes, that motion carries, and we will move to the resolution portion of the agenda. There is no consent agenda because Councilmember Borderwood has filed an affidavit of substantial interest on both. Is there a motion on Resolution 2024-337?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Bearfield? No. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes, that motion carries. Is there a motion on Resolution 2024-338?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes, that motion carries. The next order of business is the election process and to canvass the election results. Michelle, would you please proceed to canvassing the May 4th, 2024 election?
Too excited.
I'm happy.
Mayor, Council, as a custodian of records for the city of Waco pursuant to the Waco, Texas Code of Ordinance, Section 2-111 of the, and the city of Waco Election Register under Texas Election Code, Section 67.006, presented to the city council the certified election returns, which were delivered via email from the McClennan County Election Administrator on May 13th, 2024 pursuant to the election services contract. Elected on the 6th day of February 2024, the city of Waco ballots for the May 4th, 2024 general election were counted, tallied, and certified on behalf of the city of Waco by Jared Goldsmith, McClennan County Elections Administrator. The certified election returns have been in custody of the city secretary since they were received. The precinct tabulations were provided to Mayor Meek and council in a sealed envelope, and copies were provided, I'm sorry, provided to Mayor Meek in a sealed envelope, and copies were provided to each council member, which includes the votes received by each precinct, the number of voters who cast a ballot in each precinct, and the total votes received.
City Secretary, would you please give the election results?
For 2024, the legal votes cast for the general election are as follows. And I'll announce them in order that they were listed on the ballot. For mayor, Jim Holmes, 2,481 votes, 70% of the votes. Aubrey Robertson, 546 votes, 15% of the votes. Eric Brown, 505 votes, 14% of the votes. For District 1, Andrea Bearfield, 456 votes, 100% of the votes. And District 3, Josh Borderwood, 550 votes, 100% of the votes. Total votes cast, 4,538 votes. The following has received the required number of votes and was declared elected. In the general election, Jim Holmes, mayor, had 2,481 votes. Andrea Bearfield, District 1, had 456 votes. And Josh Borderwood, District 3, had 550 votes. This concludes my report.
As mayor of the city of Waco, Texas, and meeting with the Waco City Council sitting as here as the canvassing authority to canvass the election for the general held on May 4th, 2024, I do hereby certify the totals presented and are all votes received by each candidate according to the certified tabulations and has been read into the record by the city secretary. I further certify the vote totals include early voting votes by precincts received under Section 87.1231 of the Texans' Elections Code. The next item to consider is Resolution 2024-339. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval. Sounds good to me.
Everyone knows, after this vote, I will give some comments, goodbye comments, then we will issue the certificate of election of the council members. I will roll out of here, and then there'll be a time for council members to give comments for the new mayor and our two new, newly-elected council members in a moment.
Any time for comments for the old mayor?
Was that, yeah, if y'all want to speak, yeah, after this vote, if y'all want to speak towards that, we can.
I actually didn't mean you.
I meant the other.
Yeah. Burn.
Keeping it light, you know?
We have a motion in a second. Please poll the council.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Borderwood?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes, that motion carries, and so I, this is the time where I get to say some goodbye comments, and then we'll do the certificate of election after this. So when I rolled on this council in 2015, talk about a long time ago, I had ju, the first, right after the election, back when it was BSR Cable Park, I went down on what was called the Royal Flush Side.
I went down on what was called the Royal Flush Side slide and busted my eardrum. And, um, so the first week of kind of meetings, I was coming into these meetings with professionals like Jennifer and others. And, um, had a busted eardrum, and people were like, what, how did, what happened with that? I was like, well, I was going down this Royal Flush Side slide, and this is big slide, and people were like, oh, man, what did we just get ourselves into with this goofball kid who is now gonna be, like, serving on the city council? Um, and so here we are, all those years later, and it's been the ride of my life, the reward of my life, uh, most rewarding thing, nearly I've gotten to do, other than, uh, be a husband and a father. And with that, Lindsay, uh, I just gotta say thank you so much for your love and support. Um, you're my best friend, um, you'd make a better mayor than me. Um, I think to know you would probably, everyone would agree with that. But your humor and clarity of thought and kindness and compassion has benefited my life more than I can say, and I'm thankful for you. Maybrian Davis, show of hands, where are you? There they are. Love you guys so much. Um, when I got sworn into mayor, y'all were just little babies. Um, and when I got on the sworn, sworn into council, y'all were not here. And, uh, so it's crazy to see, um, what time does, and I love you guys so much. Um, council, this is a family. It is really rare for government to have the level of camaraderie and trust and deep care for each other, um, that's rooted in friendship, sincere friendship. Um, we can laugh together, we can debate together, we can fight together, and then we can laugh together. And we do this because we care about each other and because we care about the people of Waco. And we care about ma- wa- making Waco a better place. And I think that trust is deep, but foundationally, it's because we all know that we're all trying to make Waco a better place. Um, Jim, you're gonna do an amazing job as mayor. It has been, it's such an honor serving with you. You're a wise leader, your financial acumen is outstanding, as already mentioned, but more importantly, you have great judgment. You have deep care for, uh, care for the city, you're new phenomenal, and I'm thankful for your friendship. Uh, Andrea, I was thinking about this, and you have incredible depth. You have great judgment, you're incredibly empathetic, you're thoughtful, um, you're understanding, you're compassionate. It's been a true honor to serve with you up here. Alice, you helped me learn what it means to be on city council. Um, it's, uh, it's about the people, and, um, it's not about anything but the people we serve. That is your true north, and that was, helped me see that should be my true north too. Um, when we're up here, you're the model of good governance in Waco, and it's been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Josh, you brought levity and wisdom and equal parts, which was really important. When we rolled on the council in twenty-twenty, it was a really hard time in America. It was a really hard time in the city and in this, for this body, in the cit- in, in our work. And your ability to have this wisdom and this rootedness and good governance and strategy, but also a, a promptness to bring levity was, is actually really important. And, um, it's been an honor serving with you. Josh and I, uh, got to know each other really well in law school, and so it's really remarkable that we get to serve, um, together in this stage. And there is honor of a lifetime to see, I was talking to you earlier, like, just see you become a man. And, um, you, I've worked with you in different capacities, but you bring a voice to this table that's important. Um, you are smart and wise and thoughtful and careful, um, and, uh, your district is blessed to have your steady helm at the, hand at the helm, and your perspective is always on point. Um, we've had a great former council too, and I'm gonna, um, thank, uh, former mayors in a moment, but, you know, we had, we had great council members that I, I had the privilege of serving with before. Um, so thankful for those, uh, council members, um, staff. Uh, all that we're able to do up here is because of the dedication of the, um, Waco City staff. Who puts their hands to the plow every day with citizens in mind. Okay. I'm good. Uh, Bradley, I said this earlier, um, but the sign of a real brother is, who would you want to go to battle with? And, um, I remember Malcolm getting mad at this part too. Um, I'd go to battle with you by my side any day. You're the smartest guy in the room, rooted in good judgment and creativity, um, but more importantly, your faith, and I'm really thankful for your friendship. We got Deanna here tonight too, and I'm really thankful for you. The sacrifice of the four family. God, I gotta pull it together because I got a lot of staff to talk about. Um, Jennifer, thank you for your deep care for the city and your friendship. Um, you own your work, um, and you've done a great job representing our city. Um, Michelle, you bring both professional and joy into every room. Um, and it, uh, it's been so great to get to know you and your thoughtfulness and attention to detail, um, and your just deep desire to be excellent is evident. Um, Deidra, um, we got our C M O. in the back. Um, Deidra, you have such a genuine care for people and the lives of Wacoans, and you're also so committed to excellence, excellence, um, and it's been an honor to get to work with you. Um, Paul, um, it's not, uh, it's not only excellence in what you do, but how you do, go about doing it. And that's been such a joy for me to get to see, um, how you do good work. I mean, you've modeled that really well. Um, Ryan, um, you're incredibly strategic and incredibly thoughtful in the definition of a public servant. Um, just seeing, you know, the sacrifice that you and your family make to make Waco better, and care deeply about you. And, um, Lisa, just the creativity and excellence that you bring to Waco too, it's outstanding. Um, so we've got the dream team, I'm really thankful for all of you guys. It's been really, golly. I'm good, I'm good, everyone's good. Um, really great to serve with each of you guys. Um, Ashley Nystrom, uh, glue that holds it together up there, just, just always keeping us in line. Um, the directors, I'm not gonna go through every single director of the City of Waco, but, um, really so thankful for the dedication that you guys have. Um, it is what it's about, you're committed to the city. People in Waco will never know how hard you guys work. Um, Sydney and Billy, thank you for taking care of us and keeping us safe in these chambers. Um, so all of these staff members are able to be lighthearted and laugh with each other by doing deep, heavy, hard work. Um, and we've been able to accomplish a lot for our community. And Wacoans' lives are directly better because of the dedication of this council and this staff. And so, honor of a lifetime to get to serve with you guys. Um, Dale Wiley, um, Dale Fissler, Wiley Stem, Esmeralda Hudson, thank you so much for all that y'all did for our city too. It's an honor to work with you. Um, to all of my friends, community members, church family, um, some of them which are here today, uh, the tax, the encouragement, um, just, you know, when you're in the trenches and I have friends by my side, and I'm thicker than, thankful for that. Uh, definitely had some, um, good wisdom and guidance in my life. Um, Jimmy Cyber, John Durham, Jimmy Hunter, J P Plutus, Rick Tullis. Thank you guys for being, um, quick calls or helped me see clearly through different things. Um, I would be really remiss if I wasn't thankful for people I get to work with. As you guys remember, we have day jobs, um, and I have a, a new family at the Cromwell Commercial Group. I see a couple of those guys here tonight. We have Bland Cromwell and Will Fipsier, thanks for being here, guys. It's been an honor of a lifetime to jump in with you. Um, and then my first title family, uh, Ryan, Lindsay, Penny, Duloc, and our entire first, uh, title team. Thanks for, uh, allowing me to get to roll into this space. Man, Waco's got so many great community partners. Judge Felton has been an incredible community partner, um, and thought partner. So thankful for our chambers of commerce, nonprofits, and small businesses. And the citizens of Waco, um, thank you for putting your trust in me to serve in this role, um, for your partnership, um, and for being a part of the team. I've always said this, Waco is a team sport, um, and we got a great community of people, um, who are on this team. So I'm gonna wrap up here quick. I've shared this before, but, um, one of my, uh, favorite, uh, verses is, um, Isaiah fifty-eight. And I think that that was kind of, you know, when I was asking myself, why did I do this? It was to try to get to be a part of, um, what this verse, um, calls for. I'm gonna pull that up and read that really quickly, and this is just something that, that means something to me. Um, and it says, "If you get rid of unfair practices, quit blaming victims, quit gossiping about other people's sins. If you're generous with the hungry and start giving yourselves to the down and out, your lives will begin to glow in the darkness. Your shadowed lives will be bathed in sunlight. I'll always show you where to go. I'll give you full bones in the emptiest of places. Firm muscles, strong bones, you'll be like a well-watered garden that never runs dry. A gurgling spring that never runs dry. You'll use the old rubble of past lives to build a new, rebuild foundations from out of your past. You'll be known as those who can fix anything, restore the old ruins, rebuild and renovate, and make the community livable again." And I've loved that verse as it relates to Waco, because this city was founded because there were springs over here on this river by this suspension bridge that got built. And I loved that verse because there was significant damage that tangibly happened to this town, and there's been damage that has happened in other ways to this town. I mean, it's been an honor of a lifetime to pursue the calling of this verse, to work as a team to make this community strong and livable. Um, so many key accomplishments that we've gotten to do as a team and a family, growing the economy, bringing in new jobs, addressing infrastructure needs, revitalizing downtown, promoting public safety, improving quality of life. But the most important thing I think that we've done is we can all end our days with thi- this group, this city staff, knowing that we've been committed to being above board, that we've been committed to being decent, that we've been committed to good government and really caring about people. Um, we've got good governance in Waco, and I'm really thankful for that. Our future is bright in Waco, not because of this team, but because of the people in this community and the character of these people. So to wrap up, everyone put on your hundred-year goggles, have some grit, throw some spaghetti on the wall. Keep building rubrics, be the smallest player on the varsity team, be City of Champions. What else out, is out there? There's probably some more y'all could think of. Those are some villainisms that, uh, were said over the years. But seriously, this has been the honor of a lifetime, I'm incredibly grateful. Thanks for humoring me, letting me rainbow on. Um, I'm incredibly.
Dylan, he's got those seventy-year goggles.
Nice, the goggles.
Hundred-year goggles?
We found them.
My hundred-year goggles?
We found them, okay.
I'll go out like Trump.
You can see the future.
See the hundred-year goggles.
There it is.
Um, I do also, I failed to, um, uh, a- address one of our director appointees, Judge Garcia. Um, you've been a, uh, such a great addition to our team. Thank you for coming, um, to Waco and, uh, working diligently, um, to be, um, our municipal judge. We're grateful for you. Um, so with that, uh, honor of a lifetime, um, and we will move on from me and on to, uh, to better things. Okay, yeah, Deidre?
I'll, I'll jump in first, can I jump in first? Yeah, uh, Dylan.
Holmes here.
What?
Holmes here.
Holmes here, yeah, Holmes here, you forgot that one too.
Who was that?
Holmes here.
Say, mayor here.
Mayor here. Uh, Mayor Holmes here, okay. Uh, the last eight years you've been on council, Dylan, uh, have, by any measure, have been one of the most dynamic periods in the, in the history of, uh, this city. And I think, uh, that we've made great strides in public safety, we've made huge strides in economic development, uh, great strides in infrastructure improvement, great strides in the quality of life. And, uh, what you've brought to this council and to this city is, is totally admirable, and, uh, I'm following in your footsteps is, uh, uh, will be a challenge, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. You know, I've always admired your love for the city, your commitment to Waco. Um, and, uh, I admire, uh, your strong faith and, uh, really admire your great family with, uh, Lindsay and, uh, and Maybrian Davis down there. Such a beautiful, uh, family that you have. Um, you know, the, these last days of your public service, uh, we had an eclipse a few weeks ago, uh, and the floods came. And the cicadas are on their way. Get that out of the way before I start, I'll tell you that. Um, and, uh, one other biblical reference I'll make, uh, is, uh, Matthew, uh, chapter five, verse five, where it says that the meek shall inherit the earth. So I think it's very appropriate that you're going into the real estate business.
Yep.
All fits the other, it's a biblical time. Uh, but anyway, uh, you've been a great, uh, companion, a great councilman, a great, uh, friend. And, uh, we may be losing you as a councilman, but we, uh, you'll always be a great friend.
Who's going?
Jump in.
Don't fight up, bro.
Um, Dylan, I, uh, I'm really appreciative of your time on council and, and, uh, your leadership of the city as our mayor. Um, when we met, I was twenty-two, uh, and we met to take on a very different kind of work at a, a really small real estate firm. Um, and the exact same visionary leadership that you've led our city with, uh, you can look back at the work we did with that ragtag group, um, and see the visionary leadership you led that firm with and all the great things we were able to get done. Um, cool developments, revitalizing the area of town. Um, your heart for growing community is not exclusive to serving up here. Um, and I hope that that is known, um, to people that know you. Um, much like the City of Waco, I wouldn't be where I am today without your influence, and I really appreciate that. Um, well, well before city council was ever on my radar, um, you met my girlfriend, now wife, uh, and the next day you called me, and because you did not want to, uh, have me leave the company, you said, hey, she's great. At the time, my, my wife lived in Austin, and you said, she's really great. I can tell she's really special. Don't leave Waco for her.
Boundaries.
And, but now she's here, and we have a wonderful daughter, and, and Waco is home. But I say all of that to say, you know, in, in more ways than one, I, you know, your influence has, has had a profound impact on my life, and I'm, I'm really appreciative of that. More I could say, but I don't wanna hug up all the oxygen here. I, I will, uh, end by saying this, uh, I, you were quoted in the trib, anyone that knows you knows that this, uh, is your intent, but that you're not seeking any higher office, this, this is really it for you. And if you don't believe him, you can go back to twenty-twenty when he rolled off council the first time and realize he shed not a single tear, did not shed a single tear that time. Uh, was very matter-of-fact, um, in, in this go-around, you can tell that it's, he's really wrapping it up and, uh, heading on home. So, thank you for your service here, bud.
Dylan, I'm gonna really miss you up here, man. I know we've known each other since oh-seven, when Baylor Law School paired us to share notes together, uh, through the prestigious Law Buddy Program, which is, uh, still in existence today.
Formal thing, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. But, uh, I, I think in the last, you know, me starting out in the pandemic with you starting as mayor, um, you know, this was a unique time in the history of the globe, let alone our community, with a pandemic, a drought, winter storms every year now, economic uncertainty, and a lot of political polarization in vitriol. And you've just shown such a steadfast, unifying visionary leadership that was anything but divisive, but really unified our community during this time. And as, as a student of history, I have just got a for-the-record writ, list as a litany, the things that the staff and council accomplished under your tenure, which is record-setting economic development, uh, almost two billion in commercial capital investment, record, record property tax exemptions for homeowners, the elderly, and the disabled, largest municipal investment in public safety, parks, infrastructure, and roads, over twenty new police officer positions, and three new fire stations funded, our airport renovation, the Foster Pavilion Penguin Shores exhibit, suspension bridge renovation, Bridge Street Plaza, Doris Miller Community Center, Lake Air Little League renovation, Twenty-Fifth Street Fire Station, New City Flag, Juneteenth made a city holiday, creation of the Veterans Advisory Board, the Solar Eclipse Event, Jesse Washington Historic Marker, TIF Zone Four, the short-term rental ordinance revised, fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage for our city staff positions, paid parental leaves for city staff, the twenty-twenty census redistricting process, and millions of dollars invested into partner agencies and efforts such as Waco Family Medicine, Heart of Texas Behavioral Health Network, and the work site with T S T C in McClain County. This is an amazing record in just three and a half years. And that doesn't even take into account what you did for all the good work you did five years before. But I am proud to call you a friend and a brother and a neighbor. And in, to paraphrase the words of a former student of mine, um, you have made a difference, and I'm looking forward to watching you make a living now.
Yeah, I just hope that with all of that, staff just was able to take that in, because again, we've said it, but, I mean, it's, it's been a great run that we've all been able to do together.
Um, thanks, Josh, for running down the litany, so that way, you know, we don't have to. To say one of the things I said, I think I talked to Matt a long time, he's here. I talked to Matt a long time for the article, and I was like, and all the things I said, he said, "All gas, no brakes," and that was the first line out, and that is- And that is clear and evident with the list of things that we were able to accomplish under your tenure as mayor, but that also speaks to who you are. You know, you always, you know, Dylan will pull out Isaiah in a minute, and I like it. I was raised at New Hope Baptist Church as a child, and right at the back of the pulpit it said, it was Proverbs 29 and 18, where there's no vision, the people perish. And I take that to mean that we were given the opportunity to sit and watch Waco grow under the vision that you cast. It was, I will never forget, we moved back to Waco in August of 2015, and you were elected in May of 2015, and I watched that election from Houston, and I was like, who is this dude? Who's this young man? All right, let's see what happens. And, you know, I watched the impact, as Congresswoman Sessions would say, the young mayor. And I watched what you've done in this tenure, the record growth, but not only overcoming challenges, pushing beyond our comfort levels, you know, stretching us, our cities, stretching us as a council, stretching our city, challenging us to actually be a city to believe in. And that is legacy. I know that the challenges that your family faces because of the amount of time that it takes, and I know that Lindsay Meek is indeed a better mayor. Maybe he'll let me have your phone number now, because he wouldn't during the tenure, because he said...
That'd be all dangerous.
Yeah. But, you know, I want to thank you for changing lives of people in this community, lives and livelihoods with the vision that you set. I appreciate the confidence that you had in each and every one of us, because our priorities are our priorities for our district. But our goal is to set a standard for our city, and we did that together. What I will ask is that as you walk away, all of the memes of me that you've created...
There's some great ones.
Disappear.
I can't make that promise.
Because, I mean, my face won't lie, and he has, he's the one that always says, especially when we were on Zoom. Every time I look up, I'm getting a text, and who is it? Me.
The best one, the best one is sitting there, and it's Christmas, and she's wearing a Christmas sweater and a blinking elf app, and giving a look like she could destroy someone. It's a great meme.
Oh, but that just speaks to who we are as people and who we are up here, as you mentioned, which is a family. So I am grateful for your next season. I am excited for your next season. I know that there are no limits or no boundaries for what you can do, whether you sit in that seat for your city or not. Now, I will say this, Darius was talking about what his plans were or were not. We plan, God laughs. So, but I know Lindsay is not gonna laugh at that, but thank you, sir.
Mayor, I guess my perspective is a little different from everybody up here. The longest-serving council member here, so I've worked with a lot of mayors. But what I was gonna say is, when I left here, you were a council member, and I thought, okay, I'm gone, you know? I had fun, I served my community, now I'm gonna just stay home. Little did I know that I was asked to come back, and when I saw that you were the mayor at the time that I came back, I called you and talked to you and realized your vision, and I saw that you were really committed to the city of Waco, to the city of Waco employees, to our community, and you were so easy to talk to as a mayor, easy to talk to as a council member, but as a mayor, you were very easy to talk to, because I could pick up the phone and say, Dylan, blah, blah, blah. And you're, now, Alice, this is what we gotta do, just listen. So there were a lot of times that you helped me. I didn't help you, you helped me.
You helped me, too.
And it was a young mayor with a big vision for the city of Waco, and you have accomplished a lot of things here. Thank you, Josh, for reminding us all the things. There are other things that he did that we probably don't have time for, but as a council member, I was real proud to serve under you as a council member and as a mayor. You've been a tremendous, tremendous mayor. And like I said, I've served with a lot of good mayors, but you're a special mayor. For some reason, you're just special. So from Alice Rodriguez, District 2.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for the service that you have done for the city of Waco and for District 2 as well, because everybody is your district, and you really showed that to it. So thank you, Mayor. I could go on and on and on and ramble, but you've been a very special mayor to me, and I thank you.
Thank you, guys. That means more than you guys know. I appreciate it so much, and thank you for those incredibly kind words. I'm grateful for all of you.
We've got a little bit more for you, so hang in. If you start getting teary-eyed, you've got your goggles you can put on.
I needed these a second ago.
More comments. I know each of Jennifer and Michelle would like to say something to you. I'd like to say something to you. And, you know, I don't necessarily like doing this, because they get emotional, like you did. And I just, I think that shows what kind of care and concern you had for me. And I don't really know also, I don't know how to put the last few years, I don't know how to encapsulate that and put it into words. It's been a remarkable journey. And your journey started as mayor right about the same time that I became city manager. I got a few months head start on you. You started in November, and I think that was good, because you hit the ground running right when you got in the chair, and you've been running up until today. You had a purpose for the time that you had, and you packed a lot into it. Your drive and certainly the project list Josh mentioned will be remembered by many. Your record's gonna be hard to beat. And in thinking about what to say tonight, I reflected on the countless hours we've spent together, whether in person or on the phone. In fact, I asked our IT department...
Oh, gosh.
To run the numbers on our calls and texts, all the meetings and emails over the past four years. I mean, there's not a punchline, because they're still calculating.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, they can't even figure it out. The smoke coming out of the IT building is bad. But, you know, and I use humor, because there is a lot of emotion in this, but I considered even making a joke about how you're joining the list of great Waco mayors, but none of them worked.
Nobody?
I laughed.
Nobody?
I laughed.
Shocked.
To the joke. All right, y'all go, you can replay it later.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Play it back, and it's gonna be knee-slapping.
As for all those letters you wrote to Clint, don't worry. Your secret is safe with me. And so as I thought about your time, you know, there's a great, great author, Maya Angelou comes to mind, and she says, I've learned that people will forget what you said, they'll forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. And you could even insert another phrase, that wise quote, they're gonna forget about our projects, too. But how you made me feel as your city manager is completely respected at all times. Even when we disagreed, we respected one another. Your leadership on this council, you respected your peers. Each one of these people, you respected them as peers, you honored them. And I always felt like your hopes for Waco were so high. The dream of what Waco can be is so high, and it continues on past tonight because of how you made me feel and how you made others feel. On a few occasions, you made me feel protected, too, when I needed it the most. You stood beside me when I had health challenges, you stood beside me. That means a lot. It means a lot. We faced some hard times together, it'd been mentioned. Some of those moments were unseen by others, some of them, you know, sitting in my office during snowvid.
In the middle of the night?
It's just, every time we had a crisis, your approach was clear, and I learned a lot from it. It was always invite other voices and minds to the table, throw some spaghetti on the wall, figure out what sticks, and then execute. And I just will always be benefited by that approach. You excelled in many areas. Your posture, it's on point, always on point. Your magazine covers. Your music selection, I hope you continue sending me playlists.
Don't unsubscribe from Spotify.
And your high expectations. There were a few things you did not do well.
Come on.
Bring a hard hat. Yeah. You did not achieve very good hard hat game while as mayor.
Yeah, I'm gonna look like a railroad bear in.
Appreciate you more than you'll know, more than you'll ever know, Deanna and I appreciate you greatly for the kind of man you are, your faith, how you brought it to the dais. And I know you'll keep cheering us on, and we're gonna be better leaders because of your time here. So thank you.
I'm determined not to cry, so I was looking around the room, and I think there's maybe two staff members who have worked at the city longer than I have in the room. And you, so I've worked with you probably from a staff perspective, one of the longest in the room. Most of your adult working life, I said this to you the other day, you've been an elected official, which is kind of unusual, that's very unusual. Think about how much your life's changed in the last nine years. I can remember Lindsay, he came to a council meeting the Tuesday before he asked you to marry him and just couldn't quit talking about how nervous he was about asking you to marry him. And so when you were a council member, you weren't married, didn't have children, and so we've known each other a long time. I want to thank Lindsay and your family for loaning you to the city. Many people don't realize how intense this job and your jobs are. It comes with great stress, great responsibility, early mornings, late nights, hard choices, fairly often unhappy people, weakened responsibilities, and great visibility for all of y'all. The ice storm on the heels of COVID, I think Bradley mentioned it, and I think you mentioned it in yesterday's article, comes to mind when many staff were sleeping at City Hall, and you would come up to City Hall in the middle of the night or be on the cell phone with us, and using one of your really strong skills, which is the skillet relationships, to really use those relationships to get residents the services they need. That also, that event also comes to mind with how much Lindsay and I have in common, which you mention often, it's not unusual for you to say, you sound like Lindsay. And so I know you've told this story in public, so I'm gonna tell it, which is Lindsay and I, during the ice storm, once people had kind of left City Hall and moved back home, but we were still in the ice storm, and I was at my house and Lindsay was at y'all's house, and we were all furiously working on, you know, water issues, and we, there was water restrictions, and of course, when we knew those water restrictions were coming away, were gonna be lifted, the very first thing, without talking to each other, that we did at the same time was load our washing machines, because we have the common dislike of full laundry bins, and so the very first thing I did after that got lifted was do a load of laundry, and so did Lindsay at your house, so...
Nothing like an empty hamper.
Yes, an empty hamper is what I like, and clean clothing. But many, many things, many things you would bring up. I appreciate your and Lindsay's support and friendship, and of course, our frank, sometimes blunt talks over the years. I'm so excited for you and your family as you take this next step in your lives. What you give up in floats and ribbon cuttings and fun events will be greatly outweighed with being able to go to church or a restaurant without a resident coming up to you and telling you about a problem in their neighborhood. But we'll come with free time for you to actually do some things other than city work and your work, and then, of course, time with your family. So I wish you the well.
Thanks, Jennifer.
So Mayor, I just want to say thankful, thank you for your thoughtfulness, your dedication, your passion that you have for the city of Waco, but the passion that you show for the city staff, it's really appreciated, it's noticed, it's talked about. Something personal that comes to mind that some may not know, and I, I think I'll be the crier. But it was very personal to me, because I was having a really bad day, and I had a health scare, and I told you about it, and it was just us two in here, and you stopped what you were doing, and you prayed for me. You will never know how much that meant to me, for you to be my boss, but then to show that kind of compassion. Okay. Okay, on a lighter note, Maybry and Davis, tell your dad to bring you to the parades. You are still invited.
Bonafide plus one.
Into detox, I think.
The rare members of the parade. But I just want to say, it's been an honor to work with you. I've only been here for two years, but I have enjoyed my time working with you, and I wish you nothing but the best, you and your family, nothing but the best.
That's overwhelming. Thanks, all those kind words. I'm very overwhelmed, and...
Let's make you more overwhelmed. We've got a little tribute video that Combs put together for you.
Hey, Waco, I'm Dylan Meek. Oh, my gosh. September is sign up for library card month. September is sign up for library card. Boy. Sign up.
A couple things. First of all, Dylan Meek, there you are, I officially feel like a failure, you're 36, and you're a mayor.
Waco is a city on the rise. Some would say it's fire hot, but it's not going up in flames. I remember a dad joke for y'all. City staff laughing, me courtesy laughing in the background. Sign up for your library card, because September is sign up for library card month. This is the month to sign up for your library card, because September is sign up for library card month. Just think of it, do like two thumbs up. And my sister along made a meme out of that, so all my in-laws now, anytime they say like thumbs up, they just send a big... Be cool, Waco. Be cool, Waco. That was worse. I can't take it anymore. One, two, three. What a privilege. I'm so humbled to be able to serve in this role. I'm excited about this work, because it's a team sport, and a lot of people have said in the last couple of days, are you nervous about stepping into leadership in 2020? And the reason that maybe, maybe I'm naive to say I'm not, but it's because of this team. You know, one of the things that Waco is most known for, for a long time, has been a bridge, a bridge that got built. And our town kind of grew up around that bridge. But connectivity and bridge building is something that this council and our community's really been working on with new emphasis in the last couple of years. I'm excited, not only about the bridge building that we've been doing across the Brazos River and investing in our core neighborhoods in East Waco and in North Waco and in South Waco like we never have before.
Hey, Dad, you are so wonderful. I'm so proud of you. And you've trussed crucial gear through these poor, long years. You are great at your meetings. You throw candy really hard on parade loads. And I love how you took me after work, and you are just a great mayor, and how I love you so much. And I think that you will grow in that. Through being mayor, I saw how intelligent you could be, and how you can really hard through these hard times.
You're warm-hearted, Dad, and you don't do anything to be nice with us. And you're really nice to give us monkey on the plug. You're just a nice dad. And you let me get new games on the yard. You're just nice, and you helped us get out of these dark times on Easter. You're not just like me and Cooper doing it.
Dylan, we're so proud of you. We're so thankful for all that you've given to the city these past few years. We're excited for the next season to come. I know we talked about being excited for the new free time you're gonna get, but we know that's gonna get filled up with bottle feedings and diaper changes, but still, we're so excited. So thankful for you, so proud of you, and we love you.
Love you, Daddy. Bye.
That's amazing. Thank you, guys. Well, incredibly moved, guys. Again, that's, I'm overwhelmed and thank you. I don't deserve that, and again, incredibly thankful for each of you. So, let's move back to business. At this moment, I, as mayor, for a second longer, will certify the election certificate, issue certificate of election to Mayor Jim Holmes, Councilwoman Andrea Bearfield, and Councilmember Josh Borderood. And at this moment, we can meet here at the base, and I will hand you certificate of elections. And then, Michelle will issue the oath of office. I will exit stage one left or right and will carry on. Let's come over here.
I have your certificates, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, first we have Jim Holmes in the name. By the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that the general election held on May 4, 2024, for Jim Holmes was duly elected as City of Waco Mayor. And actually, we have, in the name of, by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that the general election held on May 4, 2024, Andrea J. Bearfield was duly elected to Waco City Council, District 1. And not least, in the name of, by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that a general election was held on May 4, 2024. 2024, and Josh Borderood was duly elected Waco City Councilmember, District 3.
I.
Hi, Ms. Montez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city of Waco.
Of the city of Waco.
Councilmember and Mayor.
Councilmember, District 1.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the city of Waco.
And the city of Waco.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome back.
Okay. Thanks, Dylan. He's making an exit with his 100-year goggles over there, stage left. The next order of business in today's agenda is the selection of a mayor pro tem, which is Resolution 2024-340. So, we need to consider a resolution designating one of the council members as mayor pro tem for the city of Waco. Do I hear a nomination and a motion?
Honorable Mayor Holmes, I am pleased to nominate Councilmember Darius Ewing to serve as mayor pro tem.
Second. We have a nomination. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Please pull the council.
Borderood?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Holmes?
Hi. Congratulations, Councilmember Ewing.
Thank you very much.
Any words of acceptance there?
Yeah, I'd really appreciate it if you could not miss any meetings.
I'm gonna be gone next week, actually.
Oh, great. No, I, thank you guys so very much. It is, it's a real honor, and I am, I'm very appreciative that you have seen whatever it is that you've seen in me that makes you feel and believe that I am suited for this. So, thank you, and I will do my best to fill the position well.
Thanks, Councilmember Ewing. And now, we'll move to item number 15, presentations and comments. And this is where we just get to kind of talk about the recent election. And if there's any, if there's any words. And I'll start, first of all, I'm gonna talk about Andrea and our councilmember Bearfield and councilmember Borderood. First of all, congratulations on your wins. You did it the right way. You didn't draw any opponents. That's the best way to run a campaign. Very efficient, so I appreciate that. You've been great representatives of your respective districts, and that's obvious because no, evident, nobody wants to run against you because you're doing such a great job, so. Congratulations on, on your reelections, and you guys have been foundations of this council, and a lot of the work that you, you listed there, Josh, has been in part due to your input on this council. So, you guys have been a joy to work with, and I look forward to continuing the good work of this council and you guys' input and strength that you bring to this council. And I'll just, on my own election, again, happy to have been elected by my, the Wacoans across the city. I appreciate your confidence in me, and I look forward to the next two years. I want to thank the voters. I want to thank my advisory team that that I put together and have served on the council for eight years, and it's kind of evolved over time. I've reached out to them countless times for advice and guidance and feedback, and y'all have been very, a lot of you are here tonight. Have been very generous with your time in, in helping me on council and helping the city. Lucky to have the support, also, of six former mayors, and again, able to reach out to, and the generosity of time that I, that I get from Mayor Dever, Mayor Duncan, Mayor Dupuy, Mayor Morrison, and now Mayor Meek, is just invaluable, because you're in a situation where you need some advice, you reach out to those guys. They have kind of a quick answer on, on how they, how they address similar issues. I want to thank also my campaign treasurer. I gotta come clean here. I'm having an affair with my campaign manager.
I know.
Luckily, it's my wife. It's my, my wife Cindy. My wife Cindy, so it's, it's all good. She's been, she's been great and just solid. And, and all of us here that run for office know that you have to have a pretty strong spouse that, that supports what you're doing and kind of fills in the gaps on, on family needs and, and is, is always there to help. And Cindy, I appreciate you and love you. I'm gonna thank my two boy, my, both of my boys are here tonight. Spencer, who's here from, he's an Austin banker. And Ryan Holt, can you get an officer to handcuff him to his chair here? I need to keep him in Waco. I need him to come back to Waco. But he's an Austin banker. He's, he's visiting for the evening, so he's right here in the front row. And Kennedy, my younger son, who's also here. It's almost, you should be at baseball practice, I think, but thank you for coming here tonight. But yeah, Spencer and Kennedy, my two sons, couldn't do this without your encouragement and help as well. You know, this afternoon, Mayor Meek and City Manager Ford and I kind of got together for a little bit of a transition, kind of a summary, and go over the transition issues. I got the nuclear codes. I got the UFO information, and I got the secret recipe to the V-Tex gut pack. It's, it's all good to go here. But anyway, we literally went through six pages of single-spaced issues that Dylan has left, and then went through another six pages of stuff that I want to do. So, it was, it was an exciting time. It'll be an exciting time for all of us here on council for the next two years. Again, there are so many great things going on in the city right now. We got a lot of great momentum, and we've talked about the public safety issues. We're in, we're in the best shape we've been in a long time. Crime rate is low as it's been in over 20 years. All the infrastructure improvements and the commitment we're making to streets and sidewalks. This council will continue to make that commitment. Economic development, as Josh read, some of those stats are just, what we've done in the last six, seven, eight years is unprecedented for the city as we continue to expand that tax base and create economic benefit to the city and the citizens. Downtown revitalization. Again, I moved here 40 years ago, and there was nothing going on downtown. And the fact that you can walk downtown now, it's kind of hard, hard to find a place to park sometimes, and all kinds of foot traffic. It's, it's so refreshing, and it's great to have a vital and vibrant downtown. And the quality of life, it's a very high priority for, for this council and for staff as we see new parks going in and across the city and all parts of the city. Excited about that. I'm excited about the, this strong council. Councilmember Bearfield, Alexia Rodriguez, Josh Borderood, and Darius Ewing. We've got, we've got a lot of exciting things going on here these next two years. Very excited about the staff that we have. City Manager Ford, I wouldn't have run for this office if I, if I hadn't known you're, you're tied in, because we have a jewel right here, guys, in Bradley Ford being our city manager. A lot of these initiatives that we talk about are his brainchild, and he can't, he's good that he doesn't say no to a lot of things. He's, he's fearless, and as for a young guy, he's, he's a joy to work with. And the staff we have with Jennifer Ritchie, and the, like, the general counsel. In my private sector life, I had a GC relationship that I, a general counsel relationship. Jennifer is fantastic and able to keep up with all of the issues that we have going. It will keep getting crazier, Jennifer. Michelle Hicks, you've only been here two years, but you, you fit in, you take care of everybody. I really appreciate that your work and your input in making us all better up here. And Judge Bobby Garcia out there, too. Those are our four appointments, and Bobby, thanks for coming in and, and doing a great job as a municipal judge. And I don't want to miss the, the ACMs in the back row back there. It's, it's a very impressive group back there. So, I'm, I'm just happy that we're in a good place in Waco, and it's up to us now to kind of carry it to the next level of building a good, strong, diverse economy that will serve the city not only for the next two years that I'm on council, but for the next 10 years, the next 20 years, the next 50 years. So, I think we all want to build a city where everyone can share in the prosperity, and so, I'm, I'm happy to, to serve as mayor these next two years. Appreciate y'all. God bless Waco.
Mayor, there's not a lot to be said. But thank you for, for me, as, as you mentioned. Thank you to the residents of District 1 for considering me as their leader for another two years. It is my privilege to do so. This is, and was, has always been my home. I came back in a season that was very different from the one that I left Waco in. And our next season is, is even better, and the best is yet to come. I think that we have all the things that have been said about how we work. I think that each of us are very thoughtful and intentional in advancing the work of our districts and the city in tandem. And it is my pleasure to be able to stand up with you all, each and every one of you, and do this work. Mayor, I'll say this. You, you oftentimes say, you mention public safety and, and that, and, and our staff, and that we have a best-in-class, is a phrase you like to use. And that's true. But I'll also extend that the acumen that you bring to the seat, the, I mean, you are a financial surgeon, sir. And that in itself is best-in-class, but it's also coupled with a man that'll climb Mount Kilimanjaro, which is so unique. And it makes it so easy to get in the trenches with you. And I look forward to your leadership. I look forward to your wisdom. I look forward to your voice in advancing Waco as a city to believe in. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll add my voice and just start out here on the dais and just say, Alice, every time we do one of these, I'm gonna say the same thing. I love you. God bless you. I love you. You know that. It's a joy to serve with you, and it's just so cool to be able to serve with such a, the legacy that you've left here and continue to make as you serve in, in the three decades of service that you've, you've put in on city council. Darius, it's been so wonderful to get to know you this last year, work with you, and share a similar sense of humor and sensibility about doing this work, and so, that has just been a delight this last year. Andrea, I know we've been paired with our agenda reviews, but I'm starting to see you as a sister from a different mister. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but. We share, we share a lot in common.
You know I love your mom.
But we, we share a lot in common, and, and I really appreciate the advice you gave about just choosing the uncontested election option, and that, that really helped me out. And so, I wanted to thank you for that.
You know, you did it before. This was new to me. I was like, wait a minute, what?
After doing it once, it kind of felt good to do it again, yeah. And although it was really awesome to see our mayor, Jim Holmes, and, and his resounding victory, and the breadth of his appeal in our community, which shows the success of his representation in District 5. I call him the, the physical watchdog, the taxpayers' champ. And so, I do think that the business community, our, our taxpayers, should know that this city is in good, sound hands that are, that are cued in on fiscal stewardship and that are taking public investment very seriously. Jim, you are a wonderful public servant. You are such a great listener and consensus builder and have such a sharp mind, not only for the budget and for financial issues, but, but for kind of the dynamics at play in our community, on our council, among our staff. And so, I'm really looking forward to serving under your leadership as, as mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my wonderful wife, the first lady of District 3, and our, our two children, my Tennessean Texan son, RC, and my Hillcrest Dolphin, Lily, for all of their support and love through the last three and a half years. But thanks to staff, and thanks to the community for, I guess, for not fielding someone to run against me.
Right. Mayor, you mentioned. Right. Mayor, you mentioned earlier, family filling in the gap. I mean, at, right now, University High School is having their all-sports banquet and that's why there's no family here because I got athletes and they're gone. And we gotta walk and chew chew and gum in the Bearfield house, but I will shout out my best friend, one of my longest tenured best friends, Dorian Beverly is here. Hey girl!
Guys, I will jump in really quickly and I will keep it short because I, I am looking forward to the reception of this. But I do have a wife that's texting me that her daughter is refusing to go down. So the quicker I can speak, the happier everyone will be. I'll just start with Alice. You have never greeted me with anything besides a smile and that, that really means a lot. The first time I was swearing on council, it was during COVID and I was alone in the third floor conference room. So my first real swearing in, I got to do alongside of you and that is an honor. Josh spoke to your legacy. And so being able to, to have that memory and that photograph with the longest-tenured council representative in our city's history, it truly is an honor to serve with you and to have been sworn in with you. I'm looking forward to continuing that. Councilwoman Bearfield, when I was applying for the appointment in 2020, I was making calls to council members and they were all very different. Jim couldn't stop saying how young I was and you. I was quite young. But when I called you, there was an entirely different sort of rhythm to the conversation and we got a chance to talk about James Baldwin and our favorite books and things that were important to us. And you let me know that it, it is perfectly fine to have, not have everyone like you and to still serve nonetheless. And those are words I really needed. So I appreciated it then. I appreciate it now. I appreciate the relationship we've cultivated over the years. Jim, Josh talked about this with Andrea, but we get to do our agenda review sessions together. And we did the first time I was on council as well. And I tell everyone this, as you were running for mayor, people were asking me about you and I just said, he is the most thoughtful and intentional and intensive thinker and just has such a deep and sincere care for the citizens of Waco. And that is what powers the hours and hours you spend on spreadsheets and questions.
The highlights alone.
Yeah, I know. You, you get the paper agenda, so you roll in with this 25-inch thick binder. You've got like callouts on every fifth page and, and that is genuinely, you could, you could do your job up here with, with a one-hundredth of that effort, but you have such a sincere commitment to the people of Waco and you're such a thoughtful person. And you've made me feel heard and welcome. As, as I mentioned you when we first met, mentioned how young I was several times, but in serving together, you have gone out of your way to call out things that you've seen in me and that, that means a lot. So I really appreciate that. And lastly, Josh, yes, everything you said is very true about our sense of humor and the way that we go about viewing this work. And I would not have had as good of a time serving if it weren't for you, not only because of that, but also the two people I normally call to confirm things are you and our former mayor. And if I were to call our former mayor and say, hey, I'm just checking to make sure we only have a business session tonight, there's a 75% chance he would lie just to prank me and say, oh, no, 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 we're, we're gonna be there at 3:00. Don't, don't be late. So having you as someone to rely on and call on those times has been wonderful. Yeah.
I try to tell the truth.
I appreciate that. Oh, and, and last thing, while, while I've got 20 more seconds to talk about the old guy. Bradley, you mentioned when, when we were giving kind words to our former mayor that, you know, people will remember his record. And, and the record I remember is one that Jim could not come close to touching and it is far and away, will never be beat, the most people to ever vote against you in a mayoral campaign in 2020. So one, one-handedly, but no one will ever have more people vote against them in a mayoral campaign. So. Just wanted to throw that out there. No comments from the crowd.
Sounds like no outbursts.
No comments from the crowd. Can we get him out of here?
I'm the audience.
Okay.
I was wondering when that gavel was gonna come down. Welcome back, everybody. And Darius, thank you for your kind words. When I came on, I said, oh my God, he is so young. I thought the mayor Dylan was, was young, but, but y'all have proved me wrong. You're, just because you're young doesn't mean you have the passion and the love for your district, for your city. And that, that means a whole lot. And I hope your district appreciates you. Josh, you have made some really hard meetings. So nice to be at. With your humor, you bring us out of this deep seriousness. And the pictures that you sent us while we're here and we're looking at our phone, oh my God, it just lifts, lifts us up. And the mayor said it right. We're a family. And I consider all of you my family. I've known Andrea way before she even thought about coming to be a council member. I served with her mama. I used to go to her mama's house at midnight. She'd call me, Alice, I need you over here. Pajamas and all, I'd go down to North Fifth Street, Fourth Street. And so guess who was there? So I knew her. I even moved her to Houston, I think. And anyway, so I've, I've known her. And so I knew when she came on, she was gonna continue the legacy of her mama. And so proud to serve with Andrea. Jim, you've been a tremendous friend to me. A tremendous friend to District 2. I appreciate that. And it's a pleasure knowing you as Jaime. So I'm trying to teach you Spanish.
Few words at a time.
But anyway, it's a pleasure being up here with some dedicated council members. And you guys make me laugh. You guys make me feel good. And if I feel good, my district feels good. So thank you all for that. Jaime, you're gonna do a good job for us. I know you will. And now our next task is getting somebody to take your place. I, I don't know about that, but we've gotta, we've gotta pick somebody. But I'm trying to be nice, guys.
So far you have.
Tough, tough shoes to fill. Very, very tough shoes to fill.
As you, I mean, as those viewers at home and people here in the gallery, this, we all work hard. We, it's such a fortunate, I've served on a lot of boards in my life, in my private sector life. And the strength that we have in, in the unity up here, we don't always all think alike. I mean, and we don't, we all have different opinions, but the friendships here are just so special and super and not with only council, but with staff. And, and I appreciate that. And it's one of the things that wanted, wanted, compelled me to, to want to serve as mayor. So anyway, with that, I think that we will now adjourn to the, a reception on the suspension bridge. Please join us for a reception on the suspension bridge. The city secretary's staff is available to direct you. Michelle, do we need to say anything?
There are golf carts available to take people over to the suspension bridge if needed.
Suspension bridge, you can just walk straight over there, kind of through, through the hotel if you want to, and then over, over to the suspension bridge. What, what's going on over there?
Reception.
A reception?
Yes, election reception.
There being no further business, the meeting stands adjourned at 7:47. Thanks.